March twenty-two, regular session.
Hey Jeff, are we ready to go? Very good. We will call this regular meeting of Marion County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Grandy, a roll call please.
Keisha Johnner?
Here.
Margaret Ramey?
Here.
Steve McCombs?
Here.
Very good, I would entertain a motion on this morning's agenda.
Make motion to approve today's agenda.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good. Jake, any communications received?
No, sir.
All right, board?
No.
No?
None from my office either, or none from me? Public comments, this is the portion of the agenda the public can speak on items not listed on this morning's agenda, the board cannot act on those items, but they could be topics for future board of supervisor meetings. Are there any public comments on items not listed on this morning's agenda? Nothing in the room. Jeff, anything online?
Sure.
All right, very good, we will move on. Would entertain a motion on this morning's consent agenda.
Make motion to approve today's consent agenda.
Second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, very good, on to business. We have public hearing portion of the proposed FY twenty-three Marion County budget. I'll let you catch up here.
That's okay.
You're doing two jobs here, you gotta be secretary and you gotta talk on this topic, so.
Well, we have, and you go, yeah, there you go. So as you said, I'm not sure exactly what direction you'd like to go, this is the public portion, the comment for public portion of the budget, what, before you, it is summarized version that was posted in the newspaper and has been in the courthouse. It's been a nearly two-month process for you guys, I believe it started in the January, first week of February. Lot of discussion, lot of good interaction amongst everyone with communications. So this is the summary of the budget, I don't know if you want to go through details or
No.
The percentages there are actuals of twenty-twenty, the way the state requires it is actual twenty-twenty-one versus the budget of twenty-twenty-three, so it actually skips the current year.
Sure.
So that's why those, some of those changes look different. We've had some big projects along the way there, still in the middle of, like the VA project and Prairie Ridge, so that throws some numbers around a little bit, so. This is where we are.
Jake, in terms of operating expenses, you know, you and I have kind of looked at it over a ten-year basis. Yeah, any idea what the increase in OpEx will be for the county year or year?
Moving forward?
Yeah.
So historically, it's, it's not a big jump, it's the one-offs, like the, the projects you bond for, those types of things, but I mean historically, the overall, if you just look at general things, it's, you know, the three percent to five percent range, it's, it's, it's not usually, just the general, general actions are usually fairly steady.
And our revenue's been running ahead of those, those increases generally.
Yeah, we, we've done pretty well, like this year, most funds held real steady for the ones that you levy for, unless you intentionally not, which like the general supplemental, that you reduced the, or proposing to reduce the levy by twenty cents. So then that levy does have a negative, going into the budget, a negative balance, but that was intentional. So effectively, you have four levying funds and all are, all are steady.
Okay.
Now, one of the big things in this budget, I guess, or bigger things that helps, is the mental health levy went away.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's over a million dollars in property tax dollars that you, that's not being collected. So I believe that the property tax collection, if you see on the top line there,
Yeah.
is actually reduced from the actual of the twenty-twenty-one.
So something, I, I'm glad you said that Jake, when you look at just high level, kind of the highlights, one of the big items is we reduced fund to
Yep, twenty cents now?
Twenty cents.
Yep.
And then we lose the, the mental health levy.
Right.
So that's a pretty, that's material.
Right, right.
And that's money that won't be levied to the taxpayers, so those are, those are, those will be reductions
Yeah.
this year from a, from a levy perspective.
Included in this budget with these summaries of revenues and such, the, the countywide levy is reduced about ninety cents.
Hmm.
So you're under ten dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's very good, and that's inclusive of Prairie Ridge, correct?
Uh, the debt service payment for that, yes.
Yes. We don't have the VA yet in there.
That's correct.
That will come in next year.
Yeah, we, we have, we have payments to make, but the capitalized interest is still taking care of that for two more years. So we have to make the payment, but we don't levy for it yet.
Okay.
So yes, that is inclusive of, of taking care of both of those obligations.
And roughly the final general fund balance will be what?
Um.
Since that's the one we have the most flexibility in, in using.
Um, the projected ending balance for the general fund is five point two million.
Okay, and that's after doing our courthouse project?
Hmm.
And the, paying for that in cash, and Chris and the folks that managed that project did a great job with that, and
So, so that balance is a projected for ending FY twenty-three, which would include, make an assumption that all of this current year that we're still in, hundred percent is going to get used.
Right.
Because that's how the budget has to operate, because it doesn't know any different now. And then, and then a hundred percent of FY twenty-three as well.
Right, and still one of our biggest operational variables would be public health.
Yeah, that's the other, that's, that budget is also one of the bigger swings, so on he, on this proposal here, you can see unlike, like the expense side, it's line nineteen, I believe it is.
Yes, it is.
Quite a bit of variance, and that's because of all the
That's this line right here.
Yeah.
Those of you looking at it, yeah.
And so that's reflective on the revenue side too, but that, that is a pretty big variance because she's, is it bidding for the
Correct.
Bidding for various grants, large grants.
Yeah, just again, to remind everybody, Kim is, she's going through that process right now, I think we even canceled the Board of Health meeting for this week because she's got a lot of bids coming in on different projects. Public health could be funded completely with those dollars this year, so that would be, that would be quite a change.
Yeah, there's not, the revenue that's proposed in this budget is effectively equal to the expenses.
Correct.
If all those come in.
Correct.
And so you have to budget for it to expend, it's just like, the expenses here show a hundred percent expenditure of the ARPA money, some of which we don't even have yet, but if you don't have it in the budget, then you can't spend, you don't have the authority to spend.
Right.
So that's why with budget you have to, some of that sometimes, when you're projecting it out that far and for the what-ifs, like we're not sure how far the VA project is, VA might be done in this current fiscal year. But as a safety net, we left two million dollars in for expense from that.
Next year.
It's not anything you guys have to collect now, it's from that bond money, but you have to be able to expend if it goes a little bit longer than the end of June, so
Right, right.
if that, that, that's reflected in, I believe it's line twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
But again, if it's done, it's, it's not something that gets duplicated, it makes, it makes that look like it's in FY twenty-one, twenty-two, and then twenty-two, twenty-three.
Right. So this is the public hearing portion, are there any comments from the public on this portion of our budget discussion? We have some other items coming up here regarding budget. Anything online?
No, sir.
Anything in the room? All right, seeing nothing. Would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make motion to close the public hearing.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. Next we have Let's get the papers organized, right? All right, next we have Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-five, which is adoption of said budget that we just discussed. Board, do you have any questions, anything you'd like to discuss with Jake, or any comments you'd like to make?
Jeff, can you go one more?
So effectively, this is the budget summary, which is reflective of what was put in the newspaper, and then all the subsequent pages in your packets are all the detail. It breaks it all the way down to each individual, every COA line that's in everyone's budget, revenue and expense, then is summarized into like this one-page book.
Right, yeah.
So Jake, what was the, we had a pretty lively discussion on salaries.
Hmm.
What was the final change in the rework of employee salaries, not impacted by contracts or union negotiations or
Yeah.
any of those things?
So if we're, if we're talking about the, for that last version, after the last conversation, to get to the, basically the five percent, any departments, all departments that were reflective, a couple increased, a couple decreased. So effectively, the net was, I believe, about fifteen thousand dollars.
Okay, so about a change of fifteen thousand on that basis?
Yeah, that was much, yep. And that did not include, so that, that did not include the public health or environmental health.
Right.
Because those are, were outside boards for any of the elected or deputies from that.
Very good, okay.
And then Department ninety-nine, we increased the environmental health a hundred thousand, from that line from
Uh, yeah.
one, one hundred thousand to two hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And then electric up to fifty thousand, so that included that difference too.
Changes are reflected in there.
Yeah.
That, that just wasn't part of the wage line.
Right, no, you're right, yep, yep.
Any comments or questions?
Nope, I haven't.
Very good, with that, would entertain a motion on Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-five.
I move we approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-five.
I'll second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-six, which is elected officials' salaries for the same period. This is regarding comp board and our discussion around comp board recommendations.
So this seems a little bit overkill, because on the actual budget form that
It's already there, yeah.
was just approved was there, and it has to be, to be submitted to the state. There's varying opinions within the code if it, this needs to be done by resolution, so for the last many years, we've just gone safe and approved this as a resolution.
Correct.
As well, this, these numbers are what you guys had to discuss prior at length, and is also on the state, the state form that you just approved.
Correct.
Seems a little over.
So items of note in there, I mean supervisors, we did not take a raise.
Items of note, the supervisor levels are the same as current year.
But it, it's a way to offset some of the other costs.
Yeah.
That we incurred as a result of legislation from the state. Anything else Jake, that we need to?
These are reflective of the comp board, and you guys had plenty of good discussion on that, so.
Yeah, I think we discussed and discussed, so.
Yeah. All right, is there a motion on Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-six?
I move we approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-six.
I'll second.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-seven is our fund designation, local option sales tax revenues.
So again, this is something that is in the approved budget all, already from a standpoint of the, the revenues of where the budget are going in, like an expense line, but this gives clear direction to the treasurer's office for when this local option sales tax comes in, of how it can be divided out. So again, this is somewhat administrative, but is necessary and appreciated by us on second floor to make sure that we place the local option sales tax collections in the correct place.
Very good. You see the splits down at the bottom?
Yep, the splits are at the bottom, and again, this is at your discretion, it can change, I guess, through, through, throughout the next years, that type of thing.
Sure. Board, any questions or comments?
No, I think we had a pretty good discussion on that also.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
I make motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-seven.
Second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey? Thank you very much.
You bet Jake, thank you for all your work.
We'll get him certified.
To all of our departments and department heads who had to rework numbers, thank you for what you did.
Yep, no, thank you.
And supporting the effort. Marion County Special Event Permit Application Mock Trial, who's doing that?
Someone online here.
Ed's at
I can speak to it, they contacted me, but if there's someone online, then
Okay.
I received a phone I received a phone call probably two weeks ago, that the homeschool organization out of Pella wanted to have a mock trial taking on, I believe, the homeschool network from Pleasant Hill. And they had done, wanted, quite honestly, to do it the right way and contact people in advance, they set a date out, I think April thirtieth, they had contacted District Court Judge out of Polk County, who would preside. They got approval from the District Court in Des Moines, Judge, Chief Judge Hubbard, to give permission to use the courtroom. And they are asking to be allowed to use the courtroom on a Saturday morning, I think it's from seven-thirty to twelve-thirty. If you notice, they went so far as to recognize they want to park in a certain area to not bring attention to the fact that they're using it, so that people from the farmer's market won't think that the bathrooms are open inside the courthouse, so they've really done a ton of work to try to put this together, and to the extent the board cares what my opinion might be, I think it's a great opportunity for these kids to be able to compete and show off our courtroom, which is beautiful.
Yeah, excellent, thank you, Ed. Kristin, and you're okay with, you got folks to staff it, and?
Yeah, no, I actually think it's a great idea as well, and I'll, I'll find staff, if I can't find staff for that center, I'll do it, so I'll make sure that we've got somebody there for more until closing.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Crystal has raised her hand, one that can speak.
Crystal?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm here if you have any other questions, I'm representing the Pleasant Hill Classical Conversations Homeschool Community. We wanted to make sure we were on this call, just in case, well, to thank you guys for entertaining this idea, and then if you had any other further questions.
Very good, thank you, Crystal, appreciate it. Sounds like you've got everything in order, and you've got the support of our county attorney and our facilities director, so that's, that's what we need. Thank you very much. Glad you're going to be using it for that. Board, any questions?
Nope, if everybody's fine with it, I'm fine with it.
Yeah, if Ed and Chris are fine with it, I'm fine with it.
All right, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve the Marion County Special Event Permit for the mock trial event on April thirtieth.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
Ed, how do you think we do in the mock trial now? You'd probably do really well, I know I would be terrible.
Well, we'll see, my high school team performs on Thursday.
Okay. I'll become a watchman of this sometime, all right. Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-four, Resolution to Approve Naming the Authorized Administrator of the Marion County Jail. Reed, how are you doing?
Good, sir, how about yourself?
Doing well, doing well. Uh, is this yours?
Yep.
All right, got a mic here for you. Tell me what you need.
Oh, just, that's what it is, it's just naming me the jail administrator, so Lieutenant Shearards transitioned back to Knights.
Okay.
And I've taken over the jail administrator spot here over the past couple months, and I'm just excited for the challenge, so that's why we put that resolution in there, so we can get it officially named.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
This is a follow-up from like, generally we do this at the beginning of the year, so we did just do this. But anytime there's a change or deputies added or taken away, we do this, so we have official record in housekeeping administration, but appreciate Chad and Reed submitting this.
All right, perfect, thank you. Board, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-four.
Congratulations, Reed.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
All right, Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-eight, supplemental agreement for T fifteen, Tyler?
Yeah, so we had a contract with Kenner Brothers and Associates for feasibility study, and since our last discussion, moving forward with the two-span bridge option, they provided supplemental agreement for design services for our RFP to move into preliminary design, and we will have another supplemental once we get to final design as well. So this is approval of that supplemental agreement for the contract for design services, which will get us through preliminary design, well, most of the regulatory permitting process with the railroad and army corps of engineers and whatnot, and also for the geotechnical services, which actually have already been completed. And just a side note, I did find out yesterday, this project, where we federalized anything after January of twenty-three, la, after January twenty-three, unless there's rare circumstances, which I talked with, via with DOT yesterday, about our project specifically, and because we don't have preliminary final design complete and aren't ready to activate the project, and for the fact that they have low cash flow because of the new transportation bill immediately shifting the state's road use tax dollars to their federal match, there's not enough road use tax dollars to swap for county and city matches, so there's low cash flow to do swap projects right now, so with ours being a multimillion dollar bridge, we're gonna be one of the first ones kicked out of the program, so. So it's not a huge, huge deal, in the end, it may cost a little more per construction, meeting some of the federal requirements. Regulatory-wise, on a project this big, we were gonna go through all the checks and balances anyway, just because of the size and scope of the project, so it may, may cost us a little bit in the end. It'd be a little more time-consuming in this preliminary design process, there are a couple hurdles we have to jump through in the federal process that we would not have had to do in the swap project, so I guess it is what it is. Just, I mean, there's no
Yeah, you can't, what are you gonna do?
Yeah, there's no argument.
I, I know, I know you and I have had a little conversation about the scuttlebutt going on in Washington. What do, what are your feelings, or do we even have any inkling and an idea of if they were to suspend the federal gas tax, how, how it would affect any road use tax money from the feds?
I, I do not have any idea how that would affect us, honestly.
I don't think anybody does, but I just wanted to throw that out there, I know that's gonna be in the, in the back of our minds.
Yeah. I know, you know, we, we do a budget appropriation come July for the transfer from
Right.
Fund eleven into secondary road fund. When I heard that appropriation of this bill hasn't been completely, or a hundred percent completed, so that part makes me a little bit nervous, but
That's me too.
For the upcoming federal fiscal year, the money has been, the bills have been passed, but appropriations haven't been made completely, so I, I don't know, I can't answer that, I don't know exactly how that would
Yeah, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, I just wanted to throw it out there.
No.
How much do we receive, and what's, what's the whole we're talking about, if, if they decide to suspend it or send it all to Ukraine?
So we, we, we receive at the county two allocations of federal dollars. The surface transportation funds, which is our STBG, Surface Transportation Block Grant, that's about four hundred thousand dollars per year, and our HBP, which is our Highway Bridge Program, which is what we would be using for this project moving forward, is about three hundred and sixty thousand. And that's gonna go down a little bit, to about three twenty, within a couple of years, and it is planned to go down. And then we don't know the full implication of the new transportation bill, on what that means, they're saying around thirty percent increase in both of those funds.
Right.
So
So you're talking a million dollars?
Yeah.
If, if it's a thirty percent.
Give or take.
Yeah, and that's our annual allocation. Right now, we have a fund balance in our HBP, so we're carrying about two point seven million dollars of fund balance right now, because we're saving up for this bridge.
Right.
And then we'll borrow ahead and still not have enough to pay for the project, so uh, it, and that borrow ahead is borrowing against allocation statewide, so that is cash the DOT has on hand that they've allocated to other county projects that are either borrowed ahead or have an accumulated balance, so the cash, that balance is received art to this point.
Yeah, I wanna make sure we, we articulate our terms correctly, because when you say borrow ahead, I mean, there's no interest charge. We're, we're just borrowing against cash.
We're borrowing against cash flow with, statewide, yes.
Right, okay. All right, well, if something changes Tyler, or, I mean, we're gonna, you and I are gonna talk Friday anyway about some of these
Yeah, and it's a moving target, you know, what I found out yesterday was different than the communication we received from the Office of Local Systems a week ago, so.
I think there's just so much, you know, variable going on right now within the economy, and yeah, we're gonna be, definitely have to keep
We will, we will make a plan on Friday, we'll start that planning process to cover some of these holes, some of it we won't be able to. If they rescind the gas tax for any length of time, we'll just have to deal with it. That'll create a situation where, where we'll have to change project direction, alter what we're planning, or find alternate means of financing, it's really that simple. So we gotta come up with those contingencies, and we'll work on that.
I did receive an email this morning, actually, from Local Systems stating that they plan to, with the new transportation bill, offset some of the additional cost of federalizing these projects by giving us more farm-to-market dollars, so in exchange in our farm-to-market account, to pay for the twenty percent match that's now going to be required of a federal aid project.
Good.
That is not set in stone, and they don't know if it'll be enough for the federal aid match, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we appreciate it.
Excuse me, Ed, farm-to, the farm-to-market route though, can only be expanded on farm-to-market routes, I'm assuming this bridge is
Correct, but as part of the new transportation bill, there was some new language in there, that off-system bridges can be funded at a hundred percent of federal aid, which has never been the case, and they'll have to
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be a change.
Anything else? Tyler?
No.
All right, very good, is there a motion on this resolution?
I move we approve Resolution twenty-two-two dash thirty-eight.
I'll second.
Johnner?
Aye.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye. All right, appointment of a Marion County representative to the Mid-Iowa Planning Alliance, Carla?
Yes, at your last meeting, you voted to join as Marion County MIPA. As well as many of our municipalities within Marion County have also followed suit to join. As now we're moving forward, as a member, Marion County can appoint either an elected official or staff person to be their representative to the MIPA board, and I am willing to serve if you would like me to.
Okay. I think that's great. Board?
Nope, I don't have a problem with it.
Appreciate it, Carla, thank you.
Thank you for stepping in.
And I'm going to undo influence the board by making a motion to do just that, Carla.
Second.
McCombs?
Aye.
Ramey?
Aye.
Johnner?
Aye.
VA update, Mr. Nestri.
Is it me, or is this the fastest debate we've had in the last year?
In twenty-twenty-two, probably.
I mean, I always bring up the rear, and I've, I've been here for like five minutes, so.
Is that a compliment, or?
It's a compliment, I love it.
I just wanted to make sure.
So VA project's going great, if you've taken the time to drive by, not drive-through, but drive by the campus, you'll notice almost everything on the north side is down, seventy-four is completely down at this point. We're pulling the debris up, you have the remainder of the fire station, which they're gonna continue to utilize here for about the next month, month and a half. It gives them a great place to have meetings, service equipment, do stuff inside, out of the rain and out of the mud. The boiler plant that the board authorized, so both boiler and chiller seventy, or seventy-five and seventy-seven are officially abated. We're working on getting the rest of the hazardous material, i.e. old fluorescent light bulbs, old oil containers, things like that, out of the building right now. When that's signed off on, that building will come down. So minus Building seventy-four, which is the west side of the main campus, the last main building that was standing. Every foundation, including footings, is now officially removed, if the building's gone, the footings and the foundation are removed as well. Dirt work is commencing, well, sands the rain we had lately, but dirt work has started. So we are in such a great position. In fact, as of yesterday, the plan was to move equipment to the south side to begin demo, which they believe will take about a week to clear the south side, but with the rain, we're gonna postpone that a little bit, maybe another week, week and a half, to move to the south, but yeah. But, uh, yeah.
Excellent.
It's going great. Uh, that six hundred and fifty foot of asbestos laid in abandoned tunnel we talked about last board meeting. That's officially now all abated, so some guy had to crawl around in that and pull all the asbestos out. But we're to the point where we're pulling that, uh, that will be uncapped officially. And then sides and, uh, substructure will be removed as well. So that's the last. Hidden tunnel, uh, we hope to find on campus.
All right.
We're definitely on track.
Thank you, Chris. That's good news. Thank you for all your work on that project.
Yeah.
Very good, Chris. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, is there a motion to close discussion? I wanna keep at the pace since I we got complimented.
I make the motion to close discussion.
I know.
I'm gonna soil it down.
I'm making a motion to close discussion. You can even dissent. I don't care.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
McCombs?
Hi.
All right. Supervisors, Steve?
Uh, well, it's been a, been a busy week so far. Uh, we have a zoning workshop tomorrow. My Karen retirement is also tomorrow. Got hurt a Thursday. And if we do that economic development meeting, you know, I'd like to come to that also.
Yeah, Carla, we need to post that. Or Jake, we need to post that.
So you want that to be a board's supervision?
Yes.
Yeah, I've got it posted on my.
You just gave it Carla and.
She has sent me the information. I just didn't know.
Yeah. Okay, typically, yeah, sometimes we are, sometimes we're not, but yeah, I'd like to listen to.
And it is Friday. There was a link, it's on the agenda, but it is Friday.
Nine.
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
Yep. You done, Steve?
Yeah, I'm done.
I have impact this week, um, also Karen's retirement, economic development, um, meeting. Also have, uh, Friday afternoon, a meeting with Regnomatic, um, tour there and a legislative meeting, and then planning and zoning next week, so.
Well, we were gonna have Board of Health this week, but Kim canceled on me. She's working on bids for that, the new structure, so we won't do that this week. It's all I got with that. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
McCombs?
Hi.
Raimi?
Hi.
Johnner?
Hi.
Very good. Thank you. We are adjourned.